Fill this stuff out correctly and we're gonna get renewed. However, we're gonna have to have a discussion as to what you need to do.
Do we need to change anything or not?
I just wake up with the file already.
Understood.
So number one is audit all the bills. Two, recommend alcohol beverage license applications to manage Patel Shambu LLC, Chong, Jaeger.
If there's an issue, I'll let you know. Go ahead and call the June council meeting order. Rock up.
Right.
Here.
All right.
Here.
Wyatt.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Here.
First on the agenda is committee approval of last month's council minutes.
A move.
Second.
There's a motion second to approve the minutes from last month. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Next is treasurer's report.
Approved.
Second.
There's a motion second to approve the treasurer's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Next is citizens forum. Did you want to discuss now or you want to wait till we get to the committee report?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you want to discuss what you're here for now or do you want to wait till we get to the committee report?
I'd just soon say it now.
Okay.
Encroachment on city property. I live, I have a rental on 140 Crestview. I believe there's other property owners that are also having a problem.
Mm-hmm.
And I was wondering what we all came up with.
Well, it was pretty much what we talked about on the phone that night.
Okay.
And it has to be okay totally by the council here yet tonight, which I'm hoping it won't be.
Okay.
You know, that you'll get the land. But then attorney's fees, surveying fees, all the fees will have to be paid for by the owners, property owners.
Right.
And we'll have to, and I don't know where Rick went to, but Rick will be coordinating all that. And hopefully, we can get your neighbor and back of you to go along with it, just split the cost down the middle and it'd be, you know, better for everybody.
Okay.
But right now, we're looking at, I don't know if we have footage in there or not.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet?
Yeah.
Yeah. Fifteen feet, which should be more than enough to take care of it.
Okay.
And that'll offer easements and everything in place. We'll still have a ton of land there yet. It just makes it a lot easier. As long as you're willing to take care of the fees and it's costing the city nothing, we'll give you the land.
Definitely. I appreciate that a lot.
Yeah. So.
Apparently, you're Mrs. Giesi?
Yes, I am.
And I had prepared, I'm Jim Quinn, and I'm the attorney for the city of Nacusa.
Uh-huh.
And I prepared a letter that it's not in final form, but we expect it'll be sent out to you, I hope, in the next seven to ten business days identifying what we just said.
Okay.
That in exchange for the city giving a fifteen-foot strip of land, that you would pay the expenses of the survey, the recording fees, the attorney fees for the deed and transfer fee documents. And then the letter concluded with an invitation to you to call either Mr. Schmidt or myself just to answer any questions.
Okay.
So that you have a point, so that you have a person that you can have a contact with.
Okay. And there are four other people involved with this?
No, we believe there's only one other involved. I think your property is on the west side.
Yes.
And your property is probably the most offending of the properties. And so the idea was that on that entire west side, we would go from Crestview all the way down to the next street and give that fifteen feet away. But on the east side, right now, we have a different game plan.
No, she's on the east side. East side of our property.
She's over here.
Yeah.
Okay. I know where you are.
I know where I live.
We know where you live. Ma'am, did you get one of these?
I.
You're on at Wazita Avenue.
I'm not sure. From work?
Your address is Wazita Avenue?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go into committee reports. Committee of the whole. Brad.
Committee of the whole, I have one meeting this month. I move for the minutes as presented.
Second.
There's a motion second to approve the committee of the whole minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
The Honorable Mayor members of Nacusa County Council, the whole meeting was held on Thursday, May 18, 2017, by 30:00 p.m. Nacusa Senior Committee Assembly. Members present were Al and Marco, Mayor, Robert Schultz, Robert Wenzel. Also in attendance were Nacusa School Board, Nacusa School Administrators, Rick Bukowka, President Reggie, and Rick Schmidt, D.P.W. Item one, Reggie, update by Rick Bukowka. Item two, discuss joint recreational plans and concerns.
Just so everybody's aware, there's another one scheduled for next Thursday, the 22nd, at 5:30. So as soon as I get the agenda from Terry, I'll get it out there. Okay, next is Ways and Means.
Ways and Means had one meeting to report. Can I make a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Second. There's a motion second to approve the Ways and Means minutes as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, the Ways and Means Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 13, 2017, at 6:15 p.m. in the council chambers at City Hall. Members present were Garrett Kuhn, Robert Schultz, August Wyack, and Brian Krupsek. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Robert Wenzel, Larry Krupsek, Jim Quinn, Rick Schmidt, and Brad Hamilton. Number one, we audited all the bills. Number two, recommend renewal alcohol beverage license application to manage Patel for Shambu LLC, Chong, Jaeger for Marcus Street Grill, John Baltus for Terry's B.P., Dan Williamson for the Pards House, Larry Gata for Dogon Corp. LLC, George Cornweed for Nacusa Futon Incorporated, Lloyd's, Scott Lloyd from The Edge LLC, Patel in Dubert for the Party Connection, Dan Carlson and Phyllis Mason for Goodfellas Pizza, Kirk Barton for K&amp;V's Bar and Grill, Kevin Foley for Foley's Dairy. Number three, recommend cigarette license applications to Terry's Amco, Dollar General, The Party Connection, Our Family Foods, and Shambu LLC. Number four, recommend all attached beverage operators licenses. Number five, recommend sending the clerk to the WMCA Annual Conference in Wisconsin Dells Per Employee Handbook, August 22 and 23, 2017. And number six, recommend donation of $125 to the 16th Annual Swing Away for Nacusa Area Youth Baseball. Make a move for adoption items two, three, four, five, and six.
I have a question. Which one of the applications was not completed for Shambu LLC? Is that, would that cover all of them or just number four?
It would be number two, the first one under number two.
The first one under number two?
Yeah.
Can you hold out manage Patel of Shambu LLC under number two? Or separate?
Sure. Okay. Recommend renewal of item two, accept manage Patel for Shambu LLC.
There's a motion second to approve items two, three, four, five, and six, set for this one that's called separate. Rock up. Schultz?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Next is Public Works. Please.
Public Works has one meeting to report on. I also have a correction from number two to read towards the end of the sentence with owners with no cost to the city and also they're to be contacting either Rick Schmidt or Attorney Quinn with any questions they may have. With that being said, I move to adopt the minutes as printed.
Second. There's a motion second to approve Public Works minutes as printed. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, Public Works Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 6, 2017, at 3:45 p.m. in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Garrett Kuhn, Gus Wyack, and Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Brad Hamilton, Dale Marth, Jim Quinn, and Rick Schmidt from the D.P.W. Item one, discuss salvage and building ordinance, demolition ordinance. Item two, recommend dealing fifteen feet of property to the east side of Lot 7 of Block 60 on Crestview Lane to both adjoining property owners with no cost to the city and using either Rick Schmidt from the D.P.W. or Attorney Quinn as contact points. Item three, discuss update with advanced disposal. Item four, discuss Public Works voiding on private property. Item five, recommend installing fence for well 5 for approximately $9,300. Questions? If not, move to adopt items two and five.
Sir? There's a motion second to approve items two and five of the Public Works report. Rock up. Al?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Next is Public Safety. Rock up. Public Safety, that was one we need to report on.
I moved that minute to accept as read.
Second. There's a motion second to accept the Public Safety Committee minutes as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
Public Safety Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 6, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Brad Hamilton, Gus Wyack, and Robert Wenzel. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Robert Schultz, Brian Krupsek, Rick Schmidt, Sean Woods, Dave Schmidt, Mike Archie, Mike Mark Myers, and Ken Wood. Item one, discuss drug and alcohol policy. Item two, discuss remodel project at City Hall. Item three, discuss ambulance staffing deployment policies. Item four, recommend accepting resignation of Eric Davin from the Police Department. Item five, discuss code enforcement. Any questions? If not, move to adopt item four.
Second.
Yes.
You did. Brad did. We will call. Schultz?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Next is Public Works.
Public Works has one meeting to report on. I also have a correction from number two to read towards the end of the sentence with owners with no cost to the city and also they're to be contacting either Rick Schmidt or Attorney Quinn with any questions they may have. With that being said, I move to adopt the minutes as printed.
Second. There's a motion second to approve Public Works minutes as printed. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, Public Works Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 6, 2017, at 3:45 p.m. in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Garrett Kuhn, Gus Wyack, and Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Brad Hamilton, Dale Marth, Jim Quinn, and Rick Schmidt from the D.P.W. Item one, discuss salvage and building ordinance, demolition ordinance. Item two, recommend dealing fifteen feet of property to the east side of Lot 7 of Block 60 on Crestview Lane to both adjoining property owners with no cost to the city and using either Rick Schmidt from the D.P.W. or Attorney Quinn as contact points. Item three, discuss update with advanced disposal. Item four, discuss Public Works voiding on private property. Item five, recommend installing fence for well 5 for approximately $9,300. Questions? If not, move to adopt items two and five.
Sir? There's a motion second to approve items two and five of the Public Works report. Rock up. Al?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Next is Public Safety. Rock up.
Public Safety, that was one we need to report on. I moved that minute to accept as read.
Second. There's a motion second to accept the Public Safety Committee minutes as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
Public Safety Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 6, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Brad Hamilton, Gus Wyack, and Robert Wenzel. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Robert Schultz, Brian Krupsek, Rick Schmidt, Sean Woods, Dave Schmidt, Mike Archie, Mike Mark Myers, and Ken Wood. Item one, discuss drug and alcohol policy. Item two, discuss remodel project at City Hall. Item three, discuss ambulance staffing deployment policies. Item four, recommend accepting resignation of Eric Davin from the Police Department. Item five, discuss code enforcement. Any questions? If not, move to adopt item four.
Second. There's a motion second to approve item four of the Public Safety Committee minutes. Rock up. Schultz?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Next is Public Works.
Public Works has one meeting to report on. I also have a correction from number two to read towards the end of the sentence with owners with no cost to the city and also they're to be contacting either Rick Schmidt or Attorney Quinn with any questions they may have. With that being said, I move to adopt the minutes as printed.
Second. There's a motion second to approve Public Works minutes as printed. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, Public Works Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 6, 2017, at 3:45 p.m. in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Garrett Kuhn, Gus Wyack, and Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Brad Hamilton, Dale Marth, Jim Quinn, and Rick Schmidt from the D.P.W. Item one, discuss salvage and building ordinance, demolition ordinance. Item two, recommend dealing fifteen feet of property to the east side of Lot 7 of Block 60 on Crestview Lane to both adjoining property owners with no cost to the city and using either Rick Schmidt from the D.P.W. or Attorney Quinn as contact points. Item three, discuss update with advanced disposal. Item four, discuss Public Works voiding on private property. Item five, recommend installing fence for well 5 for approximately $9,300. Questions? If not, move to adopt items two and five.
Sir? There's a motion second to approve items two and five of the Public Works report. Rock up. Al?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Next is Public Safety. Rock up.
Public Safety, that was one we need to report on. I moved that minute to accept as read.
Second. There's a motion second to accept the Public Safety Committee minutes as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
Public Safety Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 6, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Brad Hamilton, Gus Wyack, and Robert Wenzel. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Robert Schultz, Brian Krupsek, Rick Schmidt, Sean Woods, Dave Schmidt, Mike Archie, Mike Mark Myers, and Ken Wood. Item one, discuss drug and alcohol policy. Item two, discuss remodel project at City Hall. Item three, discuss ambulance staffing deployment policies. Item four, recommend accepting resignation of Eric Davin from the Police Department. Item five, discuss code enforcement. Any questions? If not, move to adopt item four.
Second. There's a motion second to approve item four of the Public Safety Committee minutes. Rock up. Schultz?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Next is property recreation and human affairs.
Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, property recreation and human affairs has two meetings. Make a motion to accept the May 17 meeting as is for minutes and for the like making a motion to make a addition, edit to the June 5 notes, number two, I think that we should disagree or agree or disagree with this. Number two, should recommend, should we recommend accepting legacy foundation grant agreement dated 16 June 2017? That we think that would be a good idea to say that that's the one we're actually going to accept or it doesn't matter?
Oh, 16 June?
Yeah.
Was it the 6th or?
Yeah, that's the one, the 6th.
Yeah.
This is the, it's dated, so that's.
Oh, I saw the end dated one. What date is it?
June 16.
Yes.
Today's June 13.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yes.
One second. There's a motion second to approve committee minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, property recreation and human affairs meeting was held Wednesday, May 17, 2017, at 4:00 p.m. in the Thompson Room of Charles and Joy in Wester Library on 100 Parks, 100 Park Street. Members present were Chairperson Robert Wenzel, Secretary Brian Krupsek, Garrett Kuhn, Rick Schmidt, Mayor Al Marco. Also in attendance were Andy and.
Hugus Steiger.
Hugus Steiger.
Yeah, that's.
Beth Thomas, Adam Decline, and Pam Pietrowski.
Pietrowski.
But there's an extra A, that's nice.
I didn't know that one.
Number one, we had a, we had a publicary connected to receive input and comments regarding future outdoor recreation opportunities in the city for incorporation into the city of the Nacusa Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. No action needed. Second meeting was held on Monday, June 5, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, Chairperson, Brian Krupsek, Secretary, Garrett Kuhn, and August Wyack. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Larry Krupsek, Caitlin Schuda, Mike Bobey, Todd Trader, and Rick Schmidt. Number one, recommend accepting Phase 1 of the Master Plan 2 for cultural recreational Plaza Splash Pad with cost, with cost outlay from city not to exceed $5,000, $500,000. Number two, recommend accepting a legacy foundation grant agreement dated June 16, Number three, discuss comprehensive park and open space plan. Number four, discuss Nacusa Strategic Plan. Number five, discuss community center update. Are there any questions?
I think we need to have a little discussion on the splash pad plan. And we just got this, it was pretty much discussed and narrowed down to a point the other night at the meeting. Rick just got these, what, yesterday or today?
Yeah.
From, from MSA.
Talking the revised master plan.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that's kind of met what we were looking for. There's a lot of things on there that they put in, but this is all hopeful down the road. This grant is for basically just the splash pad and the immediate amenities to it. I mean, there's a lot of sidewalk and things on here. That, that's all fine, but that's, like you said, down the road. So this is just, basically, the main thing we're concentrating on is just the splash pad and the immediate area. So I think that's kind of what we, we discussed the other night with the fence adjustments, things like that. So I don't know if anybody has any other questions or anything about it.
Not moving item two on this plan, right?
No, this was just where they're shrinking the fence, the outfield fence up 20 feet.
Yeah.
And what will happen with this is this will get incorporated into our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. So the items that don't get covered under the grant would be in there as future grant opportunities, possible fundraising by Alliance Club, donations from the community or other entities. So this gives us a, an idea of what we want that area to look, look like. So as we go forward, it's.
Second.
Oh, I was gonna say thank you to the baseball association for their input too. Doug doesn't want.
In the list of the things in here that we can trim or things that are needed in there right away.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we'll be able to get that under the 500 probably.
Yeah.
So. I would like to see both of these, two recommendations called separate.
Oh, what, number one and number two?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't have any other discussion on it if anybody else has.
Make a motion to accept. I am number one.
Second. There's a motion second to approve item one of the property recreation minutes. Rock up. Schultz?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Next is Public Works.
Public Works has one meeting to report on. I also have a correction from number two to read towards the end of the sentence with owners with no cost to the city and also they're to be contacting either Rick Schmidt or Attorney Quinn with any questions they may have. With that being said, I move to adopt the minutes as printed.
Second. There's a motion second to approve item number two, the legacy foundation grant. Rock up. Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Okay. That's gonna be a nice size splash pad.
Yeah.
It'll look too big.
But if you go out there.
It's gonna be nice.
It's big, so I think, I'd like to say thank you to Legacy Foundation.
Yes.
For providing this, us with this opportunity and hopefully, everything works out well. Thank you.
Next is wage salary.
Wage and salary had one meeting. I approved it up. This is presented.
Second. There's a motion second to approve the wage and salary minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Poppy Day Proclamation. Everybody has a copy of it?
Yes.
Here is a motion, a second, to approve the Poppy Day Proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Is that something you want to read? No?
Yeah, I can go ahead. Whereas the annual sale of poppies by the Joseph J. White American Legion Post four forty-two has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders, and whereas American Legion Post four forty-two poppies are assembled by disabled veterans in the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, then whereas the basic purpose of this annual sale of poppies in June thirty of two thousand seventeen from eight A.M. until twelve noon in the Business District of Nacusa by the Joseph J. White American Legion Post four forty-two is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Therefore, I, Mayor Al Marco, Mayor of the City of Nacusa, to hereby urge citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of poppies, the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a poppy poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to provide as American citizens.
I know that I kind of forgot a little bit there, but I thought it was important for people to actually hear what it was. I know I'll be, I'll need to buy a few, but I always have to have one of my gear.
Next is Budget Resolution. Transfer from water account into the general account.
Move to approve the resolution for two hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, eight cents. Do I do?
Here is a motion, a second, for the budget transfer resolution. Go up. Coon?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anybody else have anything else under new business? Okay, going in two monthly reports. First is the Police Chief's monthly reports.
Move.
Second. There is a motion, a second, for the Police Chief's monthly report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is Public Works Monthly Report.
Move.
Second.
Motion, a second, for the Public Works Monthly Report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is the Ambulance Department's Monthly Report.
Move.
Second. Motion, a second, for the ambulance report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is the Department of Department's Monthly Report.
Move.
Second.
Motion, a second, for the Department of Department's Report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is the Building Inspector's Monthly Report.
Move.
Second.
Here is a motion, a second, for the Building Inspector's Report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is Community Centers Monthly Report.
Move.
Second. Motion, a second, for the Community Centers Monthly Report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is Airport Report.
Basically, we're just moving right along as we're getting the trees, getting the agreements, get the trees down, we're working with Gold Lake, kind of hub right now. And then do most, a good portion of that, if not all of it, in the wintertime, obviously, so we can try to keep down the damage on the paraisies and such.
But do they have to remove their trees?
Depends, everybody that has trees older than a certain date in nineteen seventies, it's like the city of Wisconsin happens, passed an ordinance that if you have your tree planted before a certain date, you have to do it yourself, or after a certain date, excuse me. Before, there's a, there's different timelines on it, and they, some of them are before, some of them are after, quite obviously what they are. So we're, we're working out an agreement with them, as we would with all the property owners around the place.
So that's part of the security?
Yeah, well, it's flight path, too, you know, you don't want a tall tree there when you're trying to land an airplane and, you know, clip the bottom of the pine, it's just same fun. Top of the pine.
Have you done that inside?
Yeah. It's not fun, I can tell you that. We had a, two accidents, I think I reported on first one. First one, a gentleman lost control of his car, went through our fence twice, and bounced around a little bit. Second one, he went through the fence, went through a door, a big hanger door, went through the back of the hanger with his car. We're working out, yeah, well, that was a very bad one.
It was two separate people?
It's two separate incidents, two separate times, month apart, month and a half apart. It wasn't good. This last one just happened. Injuries, I don't know what I wouldn't report on anyways, but the injuries to the building were quite, quite, well, let's put it this way, now we have a back door on our building, and the first thing I thought when they drove right by it, to look at the building was, hey, let's put a garage door type of thing, you can get stuff in and out the other way, which, which is gonna work, that's gonna save us some money. Insurance, they're still being worked on. Oh, what else is going on? Gearing up for EAA, gearing up for Health, San Valley, you know, just whatever, we've got things going on in the council. Again, if anybody wishes to come on down, we'll give you a tour or something, you can do it, give me a call, I can help you. It's really, really happening now. Thank you.
Motion, a second, to approve the Iber, Iberly Airport Report.
Still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is the bills. We have three bill lists. Council, four fifty-five, Airport Commission, fifty-five, Wage and Salary, two fifty, Community of the Whole, one hundred and ten, Ways and Means, two fifty, Public Works, two fifty, Public Safety, two fifty, Property Rec, four forty-five, Camera, twenty, Mayor, six hundred.
Look to approve the bills, present.
Second. There is a motion, a second, to approve the bills. Go up. Coon?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mean here?
I think there's a need in the water for additional water service. All that plays out tomorrow, and I don't know.
Right. If you've got one person that's got trouble, everybody else is trouble. Yeah, they're in trouble. Yep, they all get the same damn water. But the thing is, is I'm going to start getting real tight if we get too many of them without access. The only reason I'm saying yes to respond here is because there's, she'd be an island and we can't make an island.
Right.
But if it starts, that everybody in the block, it starts backing up the safe.